One moment, one moment. So you just click that little got it button on your screen. Mr. Long, you're good to go.
Thank you, Seth. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the February 12th, 2022, Central School Committee Meeting to order. This meeting will be recorded and posted following the meeting. We will have a public comment after the presentation is done today through the Zoom. But community members can also email me at long@the.org if they have any questions. So we'll start the meeting by doing a roll call vote. Long, yes, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Ms. Limblon?
Yes.
Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
And Dr. Burkowski?
Yes.
All right, so before we get into the presentation, so this is our annual budget workshop. It's been on a Saturday morning for the 10 years that Evan on the school committee is a great opportunity for us to start getting the budget information out to the public. This is the first time that most of the committee has seen this information. We received a binder earlier this week with the information. Peter and I have seen information ahead of time because we're on the finance subcommittee. But really, you know, this is our first opportunity to get the for the administration to get the budget information out to the public. This is a conversation we typically have from February until town meeting when our official budget number for the next fiscal year is approved. And then it's something we talk about typically at most meetings as we go through any, you know, changes or anything needs to be added to the budget for whatever reason. So this time what I'm going to do is turn it over to Superintendent Burkhead and Dr. Dutch to start the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Long and School Committee. Good morning, everyone, and beautiful Saturday morning. We're looking forward to presenting the FY23 budget through this workshop and look forward to sharing the reflection of our values through that budget. I would like to, and just for formatting purposes, Dr. Dutch will share a presentation. Him and I will collaborate on that presentation. We'll stop when we get to the, we'll start stopping at specific slides to give the committee opportunities to ask questions. We also, I also want to thank our cost center leaders, our principals, our central office team and our department chairs for being present as well as our other cost center leaders, technology, food services for being here today. So if we have any specific questions that they may be able to better answer, that'll be terrific. And I asked those folks if something, a question does pop up that you would like to chime in on to simply raise your hand on the screen and Chairman Long will or Seth will allow you the opportunity to unmute and speak. All right, so Dr. Dutch, you want to start the presentation?
Yes, let me share my screen. So hopefully, everybody can see that at this point.
Yes.
Okay, great. Get this into presentation format. Okay. So, Mr. Burkhead, I'll turn it over to you and we'll progress the slides throughout.
Thank you. You want to hit the or do I have access to the first slide? Okay. All right, so, yeah, thank you. So the budget is not simply how we spend our money. The budget to us is a reflection of our district values, our core values and beliefs. The goal this year is on creating equitable opportunities for all our students and families while providing the highest educational experience. So money is a reflection of what we value. You measure what you value. So today you're going to see that. I'd like to start out to talk about some of our values and beliefs through the lens of our two pillars, which we operate our district through. And those two pillars are a culture of collaboration and a culture of excellence. So in today's budget, you'll see the monies that we spend, there'll be a direct through line through those two pillars. And I'll get into a little bit more detail in the next slide. So some high level highlights of what you'll see today reflecting in our budget are under our cultural of excellence, academic and personal is an increased investment in curriculum. What we found when we, as most people know, the central office team is pretty much predominantly been here 17 months or less. And what we found over last year in the, in the, and this year is that we haven't been investing enough in our curriculum, which ultimately reflects in what our department chairs can do, what our assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction and professional learning can do, and ultimately what our key teachers can do in the classrooms with their children. We've actually tripled our curriculum budget from 17 months ago, and we're very proud of that. So we'll be showing you some examples of that. And I'm sure our department chairs will be able to speak a little to that as necessary today. So we're committed to that increased investment, and we believe that will reflect on improved learning opportunities for our students and a higher level of academic excellence. The next one is removal of athletic fees. And a little context here. When I was interviewed for the superintendent position a few years back, it was made crystal clear through all stakeholder groups that I think this was the number one or two concern for the community is the number of fees. The fees total approximately a million dollars that we take in revenue. And once a school district becomes comfortable collecting those fees, that becomes part of your budget. And therefore, they're tough to get rid of. My commitment in starting last year was to eliminate all those fees in my tenure as superintendent. We were successful last year in removing the full day kindergarten, which again aligns with our commitment to equity for all students and families. And that was an approximate $525,000 commitment. And you have to think about that as that's $525,000 that we don't have every single year in our budget for eternity that we have to find money for. Similarly, the next big ticket item and fee, and I refer to them as taxes, because I think in a public school, there should be no fees. So we've committed this year to making and finding room to remove all athletic fees. For those that aren't familiar with that, some families are paying a cap of $900 a year on top of bus fees and parking fees. It gets really expensive for our families. And especially during COVID, and anytime, quite honestly, that's too much. It also blocks potential families and students from participating. Although we do offer scholarship for those that can't afford the fees, a lot of people don't participate because of the fee structure. So this is a net value of approximately $220,000 a year, which is significant savings to our families. That all that money goes back into the pockets of our families. It allows our students to fully participate, not worry about a fee. And I'm assuming that the numbers of student athletes that participate will increase. But I also know for a fact that I, that our families will appreciate having their money back in their pockets. So that's a huge investment for us and what we're committed to. And we believe that aligns with our personal excellence. We want work, students, athletes, or students participating and extracurricular events and the whole, developing the whole child. The last one is, you know, a first ever, and you've heard that the last couple of years, we're establishing a lot of first ever's. And this one is aligned for a diversity, equity, and inclusion line item. A commitment to spending money on equity, quite honestly. And last year, a first was hiring the first director of equity and inclusion. And one of the best moves we've made. In fact, I've got superintendents almost monthly contacting me because we are ahead of the curve here, asking me about the position of DEI, how we hire that person, what they do. And I think within a few years, you're going to see every district in the state that will have that commitment. The next thing they'll have to do is organize a budget so that we can continue to establish equity and all the great things that are happening in that department. And the other pillar is collaboration, partnerships, working with people, building relationships. The core foundation of any great district, or if we want to be the best district in the world, these are things that simply have to happen. And it really important when developing a budget. So something we've worked on is additional funding for maintenance. And so I think it's important to understand that as recently as the last school committee opening with Dr. Burkowski was successful in achieving a place in the board. I believe there were eight people running for that seat. Every one of them said that the, one of their biggest concerns was the facilities, our buildings. And they were right. We've come in and I want to comment, compliment our, and again, a partnership, our town, our town facilities, the town manager, the DPW, our own facilities, assistant director, Mr. Dylan, a custodial team. We've really spent a lot of time, and Dr. Dutch, of course, in assessing the needs of our buildings. And this really came to light when we, when we had to use CARES money to really assess that HVAC systems and air quality in our buildings. And I will say, and this has come from professionals that are third party that have come and looked at our buildings, that our buildings are in the best shape they've been in years as far as HVAC and air quality. And our commitment is to making sure that is maintained. Oftentimes, what happens in budgeting is that schools put themselves in a position where they have to make a decision between hiring a teacher that's needed to put in front of kids or putting money in for maintenance of a boiler in a school. And nine out of 10 times, the staff is going to win that, as it should. We want to avoid that by working smarter on this and including this in our budget. So what we did last year again was a first ever, we had a first ever line, or this year, excuse me, this fiscal year, we have our first ever maintenance line item. I think it shows the town, we're good stewards of their money. It shows a partnership between the town and our community members and our taxpayers that we're committed in our budget. And we're not always going to rely on the town to proactively take care of our buildings. So we're not asking for another new school. So that Wampertuck is being taken care of. So that the high school, Wampertuck and high school in Wampertuck, Jake, excuse me, have new roofs that are coming up through capital. And that's another partnership that the town has worked very closely with us. But while we're working on that, it also means maintenance of all those schools and the new gate, and the new gates. If you think about it, gates is a relatively new building, but if you don't maintain it, it will quickly be a building that needs repairs. So what we're looking to do and what we'll see in this budget is we're looking at doubling that maintenance line item. Again, showing a commitment with our town partners that we're taking care of our buildings. So when we do go out and ask for a new combined Havley and Pushing School, that they also know that we're taking care of our buildings in good faith, that we're also we're also taking advantage of the capital money that the town has allotted us and committing to those projects at the same time. So that our buildings will be in good shape for the future. So I think that's an important one. I spent a little more time on that. I think increased town support goes hand in hand. I just want to thank all those community members who supported the votes. As recently as the MSBA on the feasibility and schematic design, which will be starting shortly. They've supported since I've been here, all our capital requests. And we have to show them in good faith that we're taking advantage of doing that. But we're also have a significant line in our, in our budget maintenance line item, which has never existed. So that they know we're just not always going to ever hand out to the town. And the last one is extremely important. We have six contracts that we'll be negotiating this year. And we want to make sure that our staff who are extremely hardworking and dedicated, I'll tell you, there's some of the best I've ever worked with. And during COVID, they've truly shined. I consider our six unions and all our employees, essential workers. They've had to work through COVID. They've had to come in buildings. They've had to work through it. So we'll look to look at all those contracts. And what a contract is, it's collaboration, it's a partnership to look at the vocabulary and the language in those contracts to make sure they're that our people are being respected and taken care of and paid accordingly. So those things are important and embedded in the budget as well.
Just to give you a little detail on the partnership with the town and how the schools are a component of how the schools are funded. The town uses something that's relatively unique, not practiced in many places, is that they create a forecasting model whereby they identify all of the funds, all of the revenue that's coming into the town. They then subtract the shared costs between the town and the school district and come up with an amount that's available, that's determined, or called the net available amount. And you can see that that's gone up by about $2.5 million from the budgeted amount in FY22 to what they're proposing in FY23. And keep in mind, the proposed amount is still a target. It's not set in stone. What then happens is that it's divided two thirds to the school district and one third to the town. So that determines the amount of money that is coming to the school district as a town appropriation. So you can see that for next fiscal year, it's $42,961,783, which is an increase of about $1.7 million, a little less than $1.7 million. So that gives you about an increase of a little over 4%. Back to you, Mr. Burkhead?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to mention something before I get into this slide. The one thing that we've been really proud of the last two years in our budgets is transparency. I think what you'll see today is a level of detail that are similar to what we have in our own books. So I want the community to know when you look at these numbers, that's exactly what the numbers we're using. And if the community will have questions down the road or want to have conversations with us, we're very open to that. We open our books up. We think it's very important that people know where we're spending our money. And we're very proud of that, too. But feedback is also helpful. So that's something you'll share. So part of that transparency is sharing the process. You know, how do we do this? And you know, the mission of the budget process is to help administration and the school committee make informed choices about the appropriation of limited resources. Developing your budget is not simply replicating the previous budget. The budget as a whole is a strategic financial and operating plan that allocates resources based on identified goals. That's a little outline that Dr. Dutch had prepared, actually, that I wanted to read and share with you. So the process itself, we work with our, our staff and before we even get to that, I want to give a sailor shout out to our financial forecast committee, which is representative of town stakeholders, school stakeholders, community members. That's a group that looks at, you know, state, state numbers, predictors, a lot of detail in what past budgets have, all kinds of, of information to come up with an estimate on what we'll have to spend as a school. So it's a really collaborative process that goes on behind the scenes. That's kind of reflects on where we get our allotment for the year. Then once we have an idea of that, we work within our school district, in our, in our school community. And so the cost center folks, those costing our people are anybody that oversee a budget. It could be principals. They could be department chairs and a central office staff. So they, they will all get a document that shows what we spent last year, what we spent it on. And then what we ask them to do is we ask them to work with their teachers to get input from those who have boots on the ground on what they may need for supplies, what they may need for programming, things like that. That goes through the principals, department chairs, and central office staff to get those requests. And then we align that with how much it costs and then the amount of revenue we have available. And then we have really in-depth meetings with our cost center folks. We look at with our principals after they collect and have meetings with the department chairs, as well as our assistant superintendent. And we meet and we go line by line. And we just talk about accountability justification. If we're increasing a line item from last year, why? Why is that important? Our textbooks simply cost a textbook simply going up? Or are we moving from one program to another? Things like that. And we always want to make sure that it aligns with our pillars and our values and our beliefs. So that conversation happens at a granular level, level, level with our central office team, with Dr. Dutch and I, and our principals and cost center leaders. For example, our athletic director meets with us, our technology director meets with us. Anyone that has a budget will meet with us and go into great detail about their requests, justify those and have conversations. And that's where things are edited and adjusted to fit the revenue that we have. And we also get involved. And I want to thank our finance sub, school committee, subcommittee. I believe that's Mr. Gates and Mr. Long, who we meet with and get feedback from after that process. They've got a kind of a draft of what you'll see today, get their input. So it's keeping the school committee in communication throughout the process. And this is a five or six month process, starting as early as, when we start thinking about this thing in September, but as early as late October, really November, where we're into this pretty heavily. Today's budget workshop is a wonderful opportunity for the community in the school committee to have a detailed look at our philosophy for the money we intend to spend, our approximate allotment, and answer any questions. The town presentation, excuse me, the public hearing is Thursday. So we invite everybody to come to that Thursday at 6:00 PM. That's a special meeting. We thought along with the school committee, that just having that one agenda item is important because it's so important. And, you know, answering the community's questions and concerns at that point would be a wonderful opportunity. Then we go before the town in the select board and have a similar conversation about the budget, our values, how we spend the money. And then we go before in the Finance and Advisory Council as well. And again, justify our budget, answer questions. So it's a pretty thorough vetting process. And then it goes before the people in the town meeting floor after all those bodies have had the opportunity to to vet it, ask questions, and get those questions answered.
Also, just, we had left out, obviously, the school committee votes on that budget after the public hearing at their next school committee meeting after that, the public hearing. So they still have opportunity for us to make modifications after the public hearing. And then they would vote on, on the budget. So one of the, the questions we're asked regularly is how are we doing this? Are we getting, getting rid of the fees? So we started to take a close look at how we're doing that. And we've created a slide here that will, will share this information. Mr. Burkhead, if you want to emphasize these points.
Thank you. We, we title this good stewards. I know I mentioned this. I think it's really important to us that we know this is taxpayer money, harder money given to schools. And we really want to be responsible for how we spend every single penny. And again, the questions that have come up, how did you save, you know, the $500,000 for last year and no, no athletic fees this year and still support contracts for your staff that are, that are fair and equitable. And we just wanted to share with folks how we're doing that. And it's very purposeful. So creative staffing solutions. When we hire our folks, we look at, you know, are there ways that we can save money here and still increase the productivity of a certain position? The most recent example is the combining of our paying outside companies to do our athletic training, which is a costly endeavor and replace administrative assistant for the AD. We combine those two into an assistant AD position that allows us to build more leadership in the district. That person has to have a creatively, we decided that person has to have a training, certified training license so that they can do both. And then we don't have to pay for the consulting. Therefore, we're saving a significant amount of money and elevating the position at the same time. So those are some examples. One example of, of things we've done to create staffing solutions. The next one is increased revenue. We've been fortunate in the town that our revenue and contribution from the town has been increased. So that's an obvious one that we're taking advantage of smartly. And I think the next one is also very, very important, you know. National and state monies have come into us through COVID. We very specifically use that money to enhance this year's budget, last year's budget, future budgets by using that money on significant costs that are usually one-time events or one-time costs. What some people may make the mistake of doing is using this money to, to purchase extra teachers or extra counselors. And that's all well and good for a year or two, but when the money runs out in a few years, those, that, those those monies now come over to your regular budget and create an extra debt for you to offset a revenue that you may not have budgeted. So if you hire a couple of staff, you know, and next thing you know, the ESSR money's gone, now you have to support those two staff in your future budgets, which may cause layoffs and other concerns. So what we've done is, for example, in the CARES Act, they've given this example, is we've put a lot of that money into our aging buildings, fixing sinks, fixing HVAC, windows, those types of things. The ESSR money, we reported out on the ESSR one and two money to our community recently on what we're spending that money on. On one-time curriculum uses. For example, we were talking about this reading program that has lacked in the district for several years. That's an extremely expensive cost to initiate. We'll be using ESSR money to do that instead of putting that $300,000 or so into our regular budget and crippling that. So again, we're very cognizant of the ESSR monies. We're appreciative of it. We're using it smartly. So it's one-time expenses that help us kick things off or keep things going and supplement our education and make it better. But also things that we're not relying on would hurt this budget. So if we're not spending $300,000 on a new reading program, a one-time cost in this year's budget, right there, you can see that's money that we can use in offsetting the athletic fees. Then looking ahead, as we always do, two or three years, oh, can we, is it sustainable? And we believe it is. Also, we've got some great people that are working in our central office and with their teams coming up with competitive grants. And so those competitive grants offset some of the things we may need to put in our regular budget and are part of this savings. And then efficiency of services, I just think that's just everything we do, we question, is it accountable? Are we, is it making us better? Is it a cost savings? Or if it's a cost increase, how will this help us improve student learning and efficiency down the road? Those conversations happen. And then this year, what you'll find in the budget is there's no additional staff. Our enrollment has gone down a little bit. We feel that we've got one of the most amazing staffs in the state. I think the families would agree with that. But we carefully looked at this and looking at our needs that this year, we don't need additional staff to carry out the services to maintain high levels of academic services. So all those things combined have allowed us to operate and achieve some of these cost savings that I alluded to earlier in the presentation.
So what you have here are, is a snapshot of where the dollars go. And you can see that the, the two largest components are direct services to students, regular education at 52.5% and special education at 26.3%. So over 75% of our budget goes into teaching and learning. When you then factor in the early, early childhood center at 1.5% and technology, you're, you're well over that 75%. And really, the only operations pieces would be administration and maintenance, which are only a little over 14%. So you can see most of the, the money is going into teaching and learning. We then look at a little more broader perspective. You can see that 80% of our expenditures, 81% or 80.5% are going towards salaries. We've got another 8.3% going to supplies, 8% other, which is mostly out of district special education costs and transportation. And then facilities and operations, which would be a lot of our maintenance. So we're next going to go into the cost center budgets. And And what I'd like to do is make this a little more interactive than rather um superintendent and I just speaking. So after each uh cost center, uh we'll give the school committee an opportunity to ask questions as well as the person responsible for that cost center. If it's a principal or department head, they'll have the um have the opportunity to speak to those. Okay? So we'll start with the elementary schools first. Now we'll start with Cushing. And I'll zoom in on these a little bit so they're they're visible. I'm going to point out, um just sorry, those things that are of significance, uh give you a layout for how this is structured. You've got the F Y twenty-two budgeted and uh budgeted amounts. And then the F Y twenty-three amounts. Where there are blanks, it's because there's one individual and we didn't want to share those personal salaries. Um and then um we'll 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 talk from there about each. So you you can see that the number of elementary teachers and kindergarten teachers has been static at uh the Cushing School. The only significant change is the number of paras. They've gone from eight to twelve. Those were not increases in positions. Those were positions that were unfilled at the beginning of this year. And that's why you're seeing those then increase. We've actually, we're planning to fill those positions for next year. Uh and then band you see as a uh increase of point two five. We have a band teacher who goes across the four elementary schools. Last year, that person was put into one school only. So we've now, in in all of these cases, we see some increases uh in in F T's. It's because I have a better handle on staff and budgets here in Situate and can identify uh providing providing uh greater detail and putting people where they actually are. Okay, uh I'm going to jump to supplies next, and then once, once we're done with uh Cushing, I'll give you the opportunity to ask questions. So supplies, we've provided a great deal of detail, both for you as well as uh the principal. We gave them the actual expenditures for the previous three years. What was budgeted for this year, they then provided their requests. In in some cases, these requests are for, I'll I'll use uh math, for example. The math text and the math supply comes as a as a collaborative process, comes as a result of a collaborative process between uh the Director of Curriculum and Instruction and the coordinator at that particular level as well as the principal. So those those people decide collaboratively what what their needs are. And that's why you see a little bit of a difference because that's not how it had always happened in the past. So this is I I think a little more accurate view of what's really needed um based on what we've spent in the past uh and and the plans is as we move forward. And then the last column is the change, the difference from one year to the next, from F Y twenty-two to F Y twenty-three. So I I'm not going to go through each of these. Uh you can see in some cases there was nothing uh requested and uh the reason for that could be a variety of of reasons. In some cases where it's the building administrative contract services, we've moved those items because they're they're district contracts. We've moved them into the district expense. So when you when you see the district expense uh line, it's going to have gone up significantly. Uh it's because we've taken these contracted services out of the line items for uh the schools. So with that said, I'm going to open it up for questions regarding Cushing. Uh Mr. Long, if you want to facilitate that.
And I'm actually going to ask the first question. Um you you kind of covered this and I mean, it's Cushing as the example just because you have it up, but across all of the schools, you you see some swings in, um you know, we're spending, in this case, we're spending less than language art supplies and more um in a different area. Is it? But I'm I'm assuming though, at the end of the day, all of the supplies we need for next year for the curriculum, like when I you're not going to tell me that we're missing, you know, but we couldn't fund something. Everything that we expect from a curriculum perspective will be funded. It's really just what we have to buy this next year versus, you know, we we may already have supplies that cover next year.
Yeah, well, I think it's in some cases, particularly the language arts and and reading, for example, that's more a function of moving money from one one program to another and less about a decline in resources. You can see, I I think the bottom line number is really what's most telling. Um if you see a a lower number um from one year to the next, then you might want to ask the question, why? Uh other than that, it's probably a reallocation. Uh and yes, to to answer your question directly, um I don't think within the curriculum area, there was anything that was requested that we've we've denied at this point. Um partly because of S R, we're able to to provide a lot of the materials. But as far as consumables and and those day-to-day expenses, yeah, we've we've been able to provide all of that.
Okay, and that was my biggest question because Cushing, I mean, you have those two examples there with e- each school is a little bit different with each subject area. So that's why I I figured I'd ask the blanket question early on as opposed to with each school.
Yo, and it, the answer to that depends on who the cost center um person was. Um some some uh divide the resource equitably across all four elementary schools. And others look at it at a per pupil basis and where, for example, Jenkins has more students than Hathley. Um a dollar amount may be greater for a particular line item at Jenkins because of that. Uh Ms. Driscoll had had really asked the curriculum coordinator, the uh the department chairs and the curriculum staff to take a granular look at what we're spending and what we need. And they provided a great deal of detail so that we we know where the funds are going and and when they actually make requests next year um through the the purchase order process, we can cross-reference and say, you know, is this something that you had planned for or is this, you know, why is this now being asked for when it wasn't planned for? Uh particularly if we we overspend a line item.
Okay, and and that makes a lot of sense. And you're right. I know that's one of the questions we've gotten in the past is, why is Jenkins spending more than another school? And it's really classified, right? You know, you need five hundred pencils for Jenkins. You only need three hundred at Cushing because, you know, proportionally, that's what you need. Um but no, you you, the important point that you made was there was nothing that we that was requested that we missed, and that was my my biggest question. So I'm glad that's okay.
Okay.
Um are there any questions on?
Here in long.
From the rest of the committee? Yep.
My apologies. I didn't want to interrupt, but I think Miss Gregory had her hand raised. It might have been pertinent to that last question you had.
Okay, sorry, I didn't say, uh Ms. Gregory, if you silver.
Can I mute?
If you want to raise your hand again, I could.
I I can unmute now. Um, no, I just I just wanted to clarify that. So we have two separate lines, E L A and reading um that we pull basically a lot of the same um a lot of the same curriculum items from. So where you see um the E L A line went to zero this year, it's because those funds went into reading. We put them all in one line so that we could have one line that we're pulling all of those materials from instead of splitting them between two. So you'll see that at all four schools, if that makes sense.
No, that ma- that makes perfect sense. Just with each school, we're going to see that happen, and that's just why I wanted to ask the question earlier. But thank you. That that makes a lot of sense. There any questions on Cushing from the rest of the committee?
Mike, just a quick clarifying question. Um so that the band teacher, the point two five position, so is that? That looks like, I mean, as I flip ahead in my book, that is, so the way that it's laid out, it's distributed between the four elementary. So basically twenty-five percent of the time at each school. Is that how it is now?
Mr. Thomas, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. Thank you. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um so we we have for the last two years had a blitz model where um the teachers are coming to a given elementary school and working as a team. Now to accomplish that, um we are using some staff from the Gates Middle School, Greg Lassar in the morning and Adam Bruchow works throughout the district. So on on most days, except for the Tuesday, I believe, when there are ensemble rehearsals taking place at Gates, um we're using the blitz model. I think what's attempting to be done here is to just show a better accounting of the use of staff. I would say, and honestly, it's probably twenty percent um because there is one day where Susie de Silva, who works primarily at the elementary school, uh does go back up to Gates and helps there. And the reasoning behind that is we have a net loss at the Gate School for uh the the lesson pullout program when Greg Lassar and Adam Bruchow are down at the elementary. So to restore that balance, she in turn on Tuesday comes up and teaches at Gates. I don't know if that kind of fills in some of the blanks.
Yeah, for me it does because um I know I've got band kids that play in the band, so I'm totally familiar with um the hard work that that department does. So um yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to clarify so that absolutely clarifies the how it works and how it's laid out in the budget. So thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Mike, I just have a quick question.
Okay, good.
I I know that we had implemented a new math program is, I'm just curious as to why the line item, I think we spent ten thousand in math last year, and then it looks like another eight thousand is proposed. I'm just curious, is that? Is there a particular reason for that? That we have all that spending two years in a row? And I mean, it's good. I'm just curious as to why. I thought that we didn't put the entire elementary level.
Uh Ms. Allen could respond to that?
Oh, I actually think I can respond because Ms. Allen was not here last year. Um she was, didn't um put that in. So right now, um the math curriculum, including the digital supports that we need are on a one-year basis. And that is something that uh we're looking to consolidate in the future so that it is not costs every year. Maybe we do a longer adoption so that we have bigger savings. Um she's already working on that, both in math and science. But that is the cost that we need to continue the math programming that we um adopted last year. And Heather, if you want to add anything, feel free, but I didn't want to put you on the spot for a program you weren't here for.
Thanks, Heidi. Yeah, um Heidi's correct. That was the class last year, and I wasn't here last year. But in order to continue that program, we do, there's consumable items that the students need as well as online digital access, which will be a recurring cost, but um we are working hard to have a longer um license so that the annual cost will be less.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Dr. Dutch, if you have anything, we can move on.
Okay, uh so Hathley staff, uh again, same format. You can see that there there are a couple of point eight positions there. Uh there's, there are no change. I don't think there are any changes in total uh total number of staff there. So you you get a pretty good idea. And then uh Hathley Supplies. Again, very, very, you know, they're all the same layout. I'm sorry to make them bounce in. It's my mouse. You can see there's a small total increase uh in the bottom line. Uh when you look at the, again, language arts, for example, and then you look at reading, you see the the increase uh similar to what you saw at Cushing. So I give you a couple of seconds to to peruse. I I'm not going to go through each line item. Uh if there are any questions regarding Hathley, happy to have those answered.
Any questions in the committee? I think we're good.
Okay, move on to Jenkins. So you you see a little bit of, you see a a reduction of a point eight position here um from F Y twenty-two to twenty-three. Uh and that's the E L L. No, I'm sorry. That's a para, primarily a para position. Uh there is one less position uh in next year's budget based on on the needs. And then jumping to their supplies. There's actually a reduction. Thank you, Principal Jen, Principal Jenkins, Dr. Long. Um we we see a three thousand dollar reduction, but you can see by line item uh where those where those reductions are. Questions?
I was just wondering if um Dr. Dutch, if someone could speak to the science, because it seems like there's some changes happening in the science, both in the the um supply and text, and it's not um it's just different across the schools, and I'm curious what what great things are going on there that's changing those costs.
Either Ms. Driscoll or Ms. Allen?
Uh I can speak to that. So last year, we didn't purchase um any of the hands-on materials for the labs that went with those. We we couldn't let anybody touch them. So we didn't purchase those. Uh we'd like to purchase them now. So um that was a pretty significant cost. Um I'm not sure exactly what the titles of the modules are, but it's the hands-on materials that go with each science module. And um that's, I think, the biggest change. Um if Heather, you want to elaborate more.
Yeah, that's correct. It, the lab materials are the biggest cost. It's also has the biggest impact on student learning. So we wanted to make sure that we were budgeting for that. Um so students had that experience that they missed for the past few years.
Thank you. That helps. And I guess with the text, the the differing numbers across the school, is that just a function of which school is needing new textbooks? Is that a a good read of that number?
So they're all getting the same thing. Um all students, all schools are getting the same program as well as um consumable workbooks. The number variation is just reflects the number of students within the building.
Thank you.
And Mike, I have I have two uh questions. Um just uh across the district for the elementary schools, the kindergarten supply line, um could somebody speak to that? It's gone from, you know, there's no line item. So is that just re- reallocated into other departments?
I can speak to that. Yes, that's exactly what we did. Just for cost savings, we put it in so that we can purchase items. Um often those are general supplies that everyone uses. So we just wanted to be able to purchase for the school and then kindergarten has that opportunity just to take what they need. So it's just reallocated.
Okay. Um and my other question um maybe goes to Dr. Dutch and um Bill about did you know the elementary schools as a whole, there was that deep dive into the kindergarten, uh those elementary school um population related to the M S B A um process? And I was just wondering if, you know, I know this, the budget process started, you know, months ago, but I was just wondering if there was any changes uh if that that deep dive had any impact on the on the elementary school budgets?
Bill, do you want, want me to respond to that?
Yeah, I could start and you could fill in the blanks, Bob. I guess, yeah, we're we're very aware of the the projected numbers. And we we do account for that. It kind of goes along with Julie said, we include that in the larger uh budgeting of the numbers to include in the schools and we're building a cushion for that based on those estimations. And then when the real numbers come in through registration, we then can become at this point a more finite answer. And then anything extra we need, we can use and apply. So there's not such a great change where um you know, we have to make it its own line item, but we are aware of that. Yes. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Bob.
Just just that, you know, this budget is reflective of the number of students currently um that are in the buildings. And and the M S B A study is a more long-term uh projection year to year. And and while they they do give you a projection for next year, um we really have a pretty good handle on on the. we really have a pretty good handle on, on the number of students that we're going to have in any building or across all four elementary schools in particular, year to year. It's the long-term, you know, ten years out, twenty years out. You know, the, which is the uncertainty in looking at all the birth data and the housing starts, housing sales, that, that sort of thing that, that we don't really do on a, on a year-to-year basis.
Thank you.
So I'm going to move on to Wampanoag. And Wampanoag again has a little more than one fewer staff member. And that again is, is one para less. And again, you know, the, the music teacher is actually a point nine. We, we always thought, I always thought it was a full-time person. They're only at the, the Wampanoag School for, for point nine. So this is more reflective of the actual time. Additionally, there's another, an additional half custodian. We were missing somebody this year, and that has since been, at least when we budgeted, so that's been addressed moving forward. Then looking at the supplies for Wampanoag, you'll see a similar picture as you did for the other schools, a very slight increase of five hundred and forty-seven dollars as it relates to the total at Wampanoag. Questions? So I'm going to move on then to the middle school. The Gates Middle School staffing. Again, this is, there's one, one fewer position this year, next year versus this year. It's a point five literacy, the LA literacy position that you see as a change. And then the, the point five math specialist. And that's because those positions were rolled into a different title for the most, for the most part. And the allied, the health and allied applied nutrition, excuse me, is a point five less as well. Mr. Beatty, I don't know if you wanted to speak to any of those modifications.
Sure. I think our existing staff will be remaining in those positions. Maybe have fallen into a different line, but the staff number stays the same.
And then supplies at the Gates Middle School. These get smaller as the, as the list get longer. And again, similar to the elementary schools, those items that our district expenses were, were taken out. Here, many of the line items, particularly for, for example, world language, math, those are the responsibility of the department chair along with the Director of Curriculum in collaboration with the principal. They, they meet, they talk about that and so open it up for questions. I don't know if Ryan, there's anything you want to comment before questions or Heidi. Okay, I'm seeing heads, heads nodding no, so I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Long, if there are any questions regarding either staff or supplies at the Gates Middle School.
Dr. Dutch, just had a quick question on the, the totals for the staffing. It looks like FY twenty-three has a number of sixteen million. Is that accurate?
No.
So the difference is accurate?
The difference is accurate. The number is wrong. I don't know where that number came from.
Not, not a big deal. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we run the same page.
It's about nine million dollars. It's a big deal. Give me one second and I will tell you what that actual number is of the for staff. Seven point eight million.
Okay. I'm not complaining about the, the number for next year. I just want to make sure. The difference is accurate.
I appreciate you pointing that out. I missed that.
Any other questions in the committee?
Okay, we'll go to the high school. High school staff. There is a request for an additional point two business teacher. And while we're willing to, to do that, the enrollment at the high school will be down about sixty students next year. So there, there would need to be some sort of a, a change as well. You see a reduction in the science teachers. I, I think it was just a miscount in FY twenty-two, but I didn't want to change the number and, and the dollars you can see do represent a difference in, in positions. I'm not sure where that, where that came from. The, the same is true for school psychologists, some, some differences in numbers and then increased number of paras in FY twenty-three. So Lisa, I don't, I don't know, or Dr. McGuire, would you like to speak to any of those changes?
Sure. So with our lighthouse transitional learning program for students coming back for hospitalizations, we had a point five school psych who retired and we ended up replacing with a adjustment counselor position because that role is better able to fulfill more needs within the high school as well as the full program. And comes in at a cost savings as a one point O to a cost savings for a school psychologist. So that was a decision that we made this past year and it's working out very well. So we want to stay with that. In addition, I just want to note the business teacher, we are going down in enrollment due to graduation. We had that two-year bubble that went up. But we didn't receive any additional staffing when we had that bubble. So for the past four years, it has been tightened. Our class sizes have been up. So at this point, as that graduating class leaves and our numbers come down a little lower, I would say we're right on point with where we're going to want to be and we have wanted to be. We just haven't been able to because of that bubble. So I do advocate, I think the business department needs to grow. I think that's what we're seeing. Our students are passionate about. They're, they're going to college, many students to study business. And for the size of our building, we want our program to grow and thrive. So that's the, the one request we have there. Thank you.
And then supplies at the high school. It's two pages of supplies, so I'll go through both of those. You're going to see a significant decrease in the supplies at the high school. Primarily because we, athletics was taken out of the high school and given its own line item. So that's where you're seeing the, the greatest reduction here in athletic contract services. You see a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars less in athletic equipment repair. You see six thousand dollars less. So those are, those are significant reductions in the supply line for the high school. But we are still spending those funds at the district level for purposes of awareness. The physical education equipment repair. I, it's, it's very unique and there is a, an outdoor ed program and I'll let Mr. Rannieri speak to that. That's something that we've not budgeted for in the past. And we, we need to. It's a big enough number that you just can't absorb that. So, Greg?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Dutch. You know, with any, when you have equipment, you need to take care of it, right? And what we saw is about two thousand and ten, we had, were fortunate enough to author a fairly large-scale pep grant that brought in three quarters of a million dollars for physical education, equipment, supplies, materials. That included eighteen new pieces of commercial-grade cardiovascular equipment in the, in the Colt Picotla Fitness Center, an outdoor adventure ed program. And, you know, just this past year, some of these outdoor items are starting to need to be replaced. So there is, was an outdoor item. An element that needed to be replaced for the tune of almost forty-five hundred dollars. So there is we also want to maintain our maintenance on our fitness equipment. You know, it doesn't take much for the deck of a treadmill to be replaced. We do have a maintenance contract for both the outdoor adventure ed equipment as well as our fitness equipment. The goal is, as well as to create a nutrition plan for our equipment so that we don't have everything fail at once and need to have a massive expense to, to replace it as well.
Thank you.
Can I just comment on that too? Thank you, Mr. Rannieri. And I, I think I want to commend Mr. Rannieri for, for doing that. Safety is the number one thing in, in wellness and the outdoor pursuits. What we had and the fitness equipment. So I think the best point he made there certainly was that we're keeping our kids safe. This is similar, I think, the analogy I would make is to our buildings. Rannieri's doing is we're putting smaller amounts of money in now so that we don't have to shut down equipment or someone gets injured. So by coming up with a three to five-year plan on maintenance improvements in the outdoor equipment, in the fitness center equipment, the kids will have high-quality equipment, will have a high product, quality wellness program. But it won't be a lump sum drop at five years from now for two hundred thousand dollars. So I think it's smart investing and it's, and it's good business. So I want to thank him for that.
It's a great point, Mr. Burkehead. So for example, we have safety inspections through the Department of Public Safety as well as Project Adventure, and they identify equipment that is reaching the end of their useful life. So for example, helmets that are used to climb on the climbing wall or any of our vertical elements indoors, they have a useful life. They get cited, we need to replace those. Ropes, harnesses, these things aren't cheap and they're awesome experiences for kids. And we need to make sure we're in compliance with any regulations. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so we'll go to the second page of Situate High Supplies. So again, you see some, some reductions, some increases. So I'd be happy to answer questions about about any of this.
Dr. Dutch, I just have one quick question for the, the foreign language staffing. I know when we did the program studies, I think it was Latin, that we weren't going to offer Latin next year. So were we able to just reallocate that staff into a different language? Or I'm just curious why we're going up if we're not offering a specific language next year?
I'll pass that on to Ms. Chula.
Yeah, sure. So what we currently have is flexibility in staffing. We have staff that can offer or speak, provide instruction in a variety of different languages. So although we're sort of dissolving that program at that level, we have some flexibility with staffing.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question about, it was sort of, at least Dr. McGuire pretty much answered it already, but it was sort of about enrollment. And so we know that that bubble has graduated. And is it accurate, as I believe it is, that behind that bubble is pretty stable class sizes? So even in the next three to five years, we don't anticipate kind of too much change there?
I do not anticipate change based on the numbers that are at Gates. Based on the numbers that we typically have to VOTAC and a couple of private schools, we should be steady over the next, I would say, three to five years at least.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Lisa.
To piggyback on that, Ms. Brandolini, the projections through our MSBA recent assessments, there'd be a slight bump, very small bump in the, in the next five years, K through twelve. However, over the next decade, they're predicting a pretty steady balanced number that we have currently right now. No huge drop, no increase. So that's also good to know as we continue with our planning.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, moving on to special education staff. Some of these staff obviously are duplicative. All of these positions were also listed on the school page for staff. But I did want to break it out as an expense within special education. So you can see how many special ed teachers there are in each school. How many, each school has one speech-language pathologist, one school psychologist, and then the number of paraprofessionals. And the differences that you see, particularly in the paraprofessionals, but also in the special education teachers, is sometimes a function of the specialized programs that may be in a particular building such as Heatherly and, and Jenkins. So that kind of explains those differences. And then you have district-wide positions. Besides the Special Education Director, you've got folks who go between all six schools potentially. The elementary team chair covers the four elementary schools, secondary team chair, the, the, the middle school and the high school. We have an added district coordinator, which is actually a point seven position, so I'll need to adjust that. Teacher visually impaired, the behavior specialist, we have two. One physical therapist who goes between all the schools. There are three occupational therapists and then two secretaries for the special ed department, one for the, the team chairs, I believe, and then the others at the central office. So you can see the total for central as well as the, the total salaries for special education. I'm going to jump to, to the supplies next before I open it up for questions. So, and, and I'm not sure why I ended up with these colors. I apologize for that. It must be because it's close to Mardi Gras. So when you you can see purchase of services, materials and supplies, these are those items that are needed. I'm, I'm going to focus on three items, four items here and then let you ask questions. And I'm assuming Dr. Boger will have some comments as well. The summer program was very effective last year, and that's the same dollar amount that we used last year. So we reallocated the same amount. It, it was a very effective program. It kept us from sending students and paying tuitions to go elsewhere. Transportation has gone up significantly when, when you see the, the district supplies. You'll see those expenses are much higher. And, and I'm sure part of that is fuel costs for what we're being charged by the vendors. But these are, these are outside third parties that are providing transportation to us. And then private school tuition and collaborative, those are our added district expenses. And so we're, we're a little bit over three point one million. I think we're close to, a little over three point two million. You can see that as a total down at the bottom here. Three point two million, ten thousand. So I'll, I'll open it up to questions.
I have a question, Mike.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So given the pandemic and obvious increase in mental health needs and also special education needs, I'm curious if there is any consideration to adding any additional special educators or social emotional staff, if you're seeing data that supports that, if there's an increased number of special education students in the district?
I'll speak to one part of this and then open it back to Michelle for regarding the special ed component. I think that the social emotional health, while there is an increase in need and severity, I, I think that Situate is very well positioned regarding those supports with an adjustment, particularly at the elementary level, where there's an adjustment counselor and a school psychologist in every building. I, I think there's enough support at that level. Middle school and the high school, I, I think that's a little more open to discussion and I'll turn that over to Michelle to respond to, in addition to your question regarding special ed teachers.
Thanks, Bob.
Yes, hi. I agree. We do, we are very fortunate to have an adjustment counselor and a school psychologist in every school building, especially, you know, at the elementary level where we don't have, you know, a ton of students. So I feel that the social emotional needs are definitely being taken care of. The other thing that we have is we have an adjustment counselor. The other thing that we have is we have an adjustment counselor specifically for our social emotional behavioral programs. That are at the Jenkins School and at Gates. So there's an additional counselor to um address the students' needs. I think that the staffing, the teachers, the counselors, the administrators, everyone we have, the paras. Are all very focused on social, emotional, mental health, and they do a great job uh working with all the children. Um, including the the students from middle school to high school. I think at sometimes um it's hard for certain students to um. You know, uh, make progress in a big school setting, and that's when we have to look at other out of district um possibilities. So even adding another counselor, it's like we can't change, like coming into a big school and those kind of things, but. Um, for for certain kids, but we do a great job with meeting all the kids' needs. The counselors are wonderful. Um. So I don't have any concerns at this point regarding that. And we also, like I said, if there are additional needs and we need to look at the collaborative. We're lucky to have South Shore Collaborative close by, and they do offer a lot of programs for kids with um mental health issues. Um, in terms of the teachers, you know, we do have relatively low caseload sizes for special ed teachers in Situate. And um, you know, when you look at the school staffing, um where there's more special ed teachers, that's also because there are special ed. Um, substantially separate programs. So at Jenkins, we have our language-based classroom, and we also have our GEMS program, the social emotional program. Um, at Hathley, we have our uh programs for students with disabilities um that are more intensive, like cognitive disabilities and and autism. Um, so I think that, you know, the budget is, um, I know that the, you know, we all work together to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all the kids.
Long, may I add to that?
Of course.
Um, as far as the SCL goes, um, I know we've talked about this in the recent state of the district, but you know, it's also our. One of our pillars and one of our commitments and developing the whole child is equally as important to us as as the academic excellence, as the social emotional. Learning of our staff in regular times, let alone COVID. It's certainly more of a commitment to us. Um, so. As I mentioned, then um we do a lot of work and we've invested in the peer um program and that partnership. Um, it's been expanded this year where each school level has its own team. We have a new district team. And so I think that's been really um well received. Each principal and their staff has committed to. Uh, investing time into looking at the recent data reported by the kids. And so it's kind of all all hands on deck with the social emotional learning. You know, of our students and our staff is as adults, you know, how do we how do we support each other? And that's been reflected in our PDE and um it's crossed over many um. Of our practices, including special education and also curriculum and development. So I know um if I could also turn this over to Ms. Driscoll to add to that as well. I think she has some. Um, can can uh bring some more insight into it as well.
Or um as far as funding goes, um, we have a substantial amount of money in the ESR grants that's dedicated specifically to social emotional learning. Um, and that includes screening, assessments and support. Um, support and services, and that goes beyond just students who qualify for special education services. That is for all students. So that's something that we have that you may not see in here. Um, but it is for all students and it's a part of how we're using those emergency funds.
Just thank, thank you for that. Um, I just want, I just want us to really um double down on all of that stuff, you know, the learning losses and. I worry about the elementary kind of bubble of um, you know, as we've talked about many times in school committee meetings and um, I'm obviously, I'm sure it's. Uh, every day in schools, just um. You know, every grade suffered, obviously, because of pandemic times, but I I just think the particular strain has been on the younger kids in um, you know. In those formative years, so just to really keep an eye on them and, you know, make sure that we're investing in them and kind of bringing them. To where they need to be is super important.
Great.
Any other questions on the special education and the rest of the committee? Uh, Dr. Dutch, I don't know if this is for you or Dr. Bogert, but I just had a question on the out of district totals. Um, I was just curious how that compared to uh this current year? And then have we heard from any of the uh private schools we send our students to if they might be increasing um tuition at this time or for next year or that would be coming up in the future?
Dr. Bogert, I'll defer to you.
Sure. Um, the schools do often increase their tuitions. We haven't gotten official notification. They can do it any at any time during the year, so I usually budget a small increase, about two percent, just to account for any. Increase that they might um they might uh add. Um, in terms of the out of districts, we're doing really well in um terms of the numbers of students going out. And in terms of uh keeping that cost down. Um, so I know that um. I think last year's budget, we were projecting or for fiscal year twenty one, projecting four million, three hundred and fourteen thousand out of district. And now we're at three point two million. Um, the reason for that is combination of factors of. Some students that have either graduated or turned twenty two, but I think um and some students that. Were not living within our town, but we were providing uh their their care. And uh, you know, when I came on board, we kind of looked at those kind of things. Students still continue to receive their out of district tuition, but it wasn't our responsibility. Um, and then finally, the most important reason is just making sure that we're providing uh effective school. Services within our public schools, and I do stand by the programs that we have in our staff. So I think that is making a dent. Um, but it is a fluid picture um at any point that, you know, could increase. Um, but I think this is a conservative estimate for what we would expect next year.
Okay, thank you. And I know that that number hit, you know, bit after a couple of times in a year in previous years, but you're right. I mean, this number's a lot lower than I've seen in previous budgets and, you know, for all the reasons that you. Uh, mentioned, I'm grateful that we've been able to cut that number down and allocate the money somewhere else. So thank you.
Uh, and just to give you a solid number, the budgeted number for out of district total lap for this fiscal year that we're in was three point eight million. So you're seeing a six hundred thousand dollar reduction.
Thank you.
Just one final question, Mike, on this topic before we kind of head to the next item. Um, not now, obviously, but I'm curious, maybe uh. A bug in front of my face. Um, in future, maybe school committee meeting or something, I'd be curious to see um what our ratios are in terms of. Like, I know the national, it's record, the national average, I think of like, it's over four hundred to one, like counselors to students, and obviously our numbers are better than that. I know that. But I'm just curious what our kind of student counselor ratios are at the schools and even special educators. Um, student ratios, those sorts of things, maybe just interesting to see in terms of where we're at as compared to. I don't know if we'd compare state or sort of national averages or local towns.
Then we could do that, Ms. Brandolini.
All right, thanks.
Ready for me to move on, Mike?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, so curriculum, um, this is a level of detail and and to be honest, it was much more detailed. Coming from the department chairs, but I wanted to give you an idea of the sorts of things that uh. You know, when you look at what those expenses were at the elementary level and elsewhere. Um, what what they're going towards. So this is the representation of this and and keep in mind that this presentation will be posted to our website. So you'll be able to to take a deeper dive. But it, you know, if you look at the elementary program in particular, uh you can see the science K through sci- K through three science curriculum. The digital textbook. So that's the detail behind what you were seeing at the elementary level. Uh, Heidi, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to this.
Um, I think I just want to thank the department chairs. So the general numbers that we all saw in all of the buildings. That's the big picture number, but as Bob said, these are those specific details to just explain. Where things are going. So the Eureka Math Digital Resources that we mentioned earlier that we need. To be able to sustain our math program, it's actually written out here. Um. Something that uh Ms. Chula and Teachers of Foreign Languages really wanted to make sure we go forward with is the stamp testing. For proficiency to move more students to earning the seal of biliteracy, which is a. Very big deal and a wonderful thing to have on your high school diploma. So I think. You have said what where we are spending our money or where we putting our funds really shows our priorities and. Um, I think this is a wonderful highlight of of some of those things.
Any questions?
I don't see any, Dr. Dutch. Thank you. Can I move on?
So next is athletics. Um, and again, I want to thank Mr. Payne for a very detailed. Budget. What I've done is kind of aggregate what he provided me. So you see this, the staffing here. One athletic train uh director, you've got one athletic trainer and assistant, uh which is the assistant AD, which which we. Uh, which was mentioned by Mr. Burkhead. And then the coaches and and the numbers um a moving target at any any point in time as as we add programs. So all salaries totaled, those those are the salaries for athletics. A supplies total, and then I've listed here for you all of the supplies. Under boys soccer, there was a listing of what was being purchased, so there there is a greater level of detail for all of this. Um, and then contracted services is up here, that uh excuse me, down here. Uh, most of that is officials. So when you have uh basketball referees uh and whatnot, those those fall within that range. But then you also would have um. Ice time. For boys and girls hockey, you've got a pool. We pay for the pool for gymnastics. Uh, if we do out indoor track, potentially, there's fees for associated with that. Um, so that that's all included in these contracted services. And then finally, uh, the last is membership to belong to each of these leagues. There's a cost associated with that um included in that. Questions about the athletic budget? I just want to point out that uh included in the spring, you'll see girls golf is is budgeted budgeted in there for supplies. As is the coach.
Uh, Dr. Dutch, just to, folks that may see that the uh winter season looks considerably more than the other two. I think a a big ticket item there is the ice time. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so seeing no questions, uh I will move on. So then we come to the district and uh you can see the district staff. I've listed each each position. And then you've got the department chairs and curriculum coordinators, which historically have had. Uh, a line on their of their own. Uh, we kind of looped them into central as an expense there. If you then go to supplies. Um, again, I know this is small. I'll try to enlarge it as much as I can. Um, I I want to point out the the significant differences to you here. So a school committee membership. There was no uh amount for them previously. We've budgeted six thousand dollars because that's what we've spent historically in that line item. Um, you'll see that contracted services has gone up significantly. You recall, I told you that each uh elementary school, middle school and high school had building admin contracted services that went away. That's because it's come into this line item. You'll see the the line item for DEI uh supplies, which didn't exist previously. You'll also see a significant increase when we get to uh electric utility payments, thirty thousand dollars more for gas utilities. And then the doubling of our preventative uh maintenance, which is the extraordinary and unanticipated. Uh, that's to fix things that we didn't didn't anticipate would happen. Uh, so you see the total has gone from two point six million to three point three. Uh, again. These supplies, uh custodial supply. Were never budgeted for previously, uh yet they were expenses that we were spending. Uh, and taking it from elsewhere. So we wanted to make sure that we budgeted for this appropriately. So I'll open it up to questions for uh regarding the district staff or supplies.
Mr. Long, I have a question if that's okay. So I'm wondering if someone can speak to, I know um, Mr. Burkhead, you said you were adding a line for DEI supplies. Can can you just give us a little bit more detail about what what might be in that line, like what kinds of activities or or. Legitimately supplies, just curious.
Um, I think we. I didn't know if Jamil was on, if he would want to respond to that.
Absolutely. I am here, just making my screen come. Oh, okay, here we go. I am here. So um, the, hey, good to see everybody. So the supplies in that end would go towards things like when we did this is our house this year, that event. When we do um the affirmation cards, things like that. Um, any attendance at um, well, not any attendance at conferences, but um. Latest literature and professional development. Um. Uh, professional development materials as well, and then any district wide initiatives that we do that can help support the the lit teams. And all initiatives therein. Um, and so. As we also get some information from the uh equity uh audit, whenever that comes up, we'll have some resources in place for that as well. So that's just the ballpark of some direct things and initiatives that would be taken care of. Helpful, little bit, doctor, or you need some more? Is that good?
No, that that's good. Thank you, Jamil. I appreciate it.
Okay, I might, I just might dovetail on that. Thank you, Mr. Adams, is that um since technically this year, we didn't have a a. A prepared budget where. As we go along, Jamil is building that budget, so. His preparations for next year, some of the things that we've accomplished that I think you you he related to there, and this, I think you will see evolve over the years as our. Uh, DEI initiatives and programming uh continues, and we'll have some more specific line items as things evolve.
Yeah, um, uh, Mr. Burkhead, I just have one other question, and it gets back to your point regarding the pillars. I I'm not asking you to do it for this budget season, but I thi- I would love, again, as Nicole said, maybe this is a conversation for a future meeting. What I would really love to see is. The budget lines that are directly associated with the pillar. So for example, Mr. Adams, I really appreciate your examples, but I would also imagine. That as teachers make changes to, you know, ELA and reading, and as teachers make changes to math curriculum, there are there are. Hints of DEI work happening there as well that is separate but collaborative with Mr. Adams. And so I think it would be helpful, at least as a school committee member, to be able to see. The different ways in which the the district is investing in DEI, is investing in wellness and, you know, personal excellence. And also investing in academic excellence, because even just looking at the curriculum, to be quite honest. It's not evident, right? Like, it's not, it's not always clear. So I think being really intentional. Um, and lining up those different items with our pillars would be, again, just a- as a as a person who's trying to understand this more, just would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mike, I have a couple of questions. Um, regarding the custodial supply line, where I imagine that last year. Regarding the custodial supply line, where I imagine that last year and the year before, a lot of that was covered by CARES, the CARES funding?
Much of it was, yes.
Yep, okay. And the line item for homeless transportation, it's, you know, this, this, last year it was 24,000. This year there's no budget. So are we, you know, confident that that wouldn't be an expense?
So there's two answers to that question. One is, we at the present time are not transporting any homeless students. But we never know who's going to become homeless, which is why there's a $24,000 estimated amount that's usually in that line item. That said, it doesn't belong in this line item. It belongs in the transportation, and that's where you'll see it when I get to transportation.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent Burkhead, I just had one question on the, on this item. So I know it's here in a different aspect of the presentation, but food services is something that might change next year. So for the past few years, school lunches have been free. I'm guessing the federal government's not going to keep supporting that as much as some short families would love it. Have we looked at, you know, the food services budget from what we expect to pay out to purchase food versus, you know, what we'll receive in from students buying lunch?
I'll just refer to Bob on that.
Okay, so the, the food service program is self, self-funding. So it's not part of our budget. So you won't see that here. It is, it is this year running to the positive side because all school lunches are free and paid for by the federal government. So we're doing very well, and it's why we've been able to replace two, two pieces of equipment through the, the profit, our food service costs. Both the food itself, all of the supplies and the staff are paid for through the revenue that they produce. So it's not budgeted and there is no cost to the district or the town for food service. So you won't, you won't see it in the budget anywhere.
Okay, part of the reason I ask, you know, a number of years ago, we were operating in the red from a food services perspective. And I think part of that was because some of the larger purchases we had to, like you just described, were considered in that same line item. So obviously, it wasn't anything our staff was doing. It was, you know, how the, how everything was grouped together. So that's part of why I was curious for that lineup.
Yeah, I, I think those items, you know, big pieces of equipment in reality are capital and should be part of the capital budget as we're moving forward. But I, I can't speak to how things function previously, but I'm, I'm very confident in the processes and the methods that the current food service director is utilizing to ensure that we will always be in the black.
Great, thank you.
Would you like me to move on?
Please.
So transportation, staff and supplies, you're seeing in one line. So we have 16 bus drivers, five van drivers, their total salaries. And then you have our supplies. So our fuel has, we've, we've increased that from 70,000 to 80,000 for this coming year. The lease of buses, we will be going out to lease our, for a new lease on new buses this year. So that is a number that's determined by, by the town. And if we find that the cost of those buses comes back significantly higher, we may need to revisit that with the financial forecast committee because that's where that, that originates. You can see this, this Lindblom, that the 24,000 for homeless transportation is here. Our supplies from headlights to almost anything is included in that. Bus drivers within their contract have longevity, and that's the cost for that. And then also as part of their contract, we pay for their bi-annual, twice a year, drug testing and their physical. That's a requirement from Department of Transport, Transportation, and we, we pay for that. So you can see the subtotal and then our total expense for transportation supplies. Any questions there?
I have a question just about the, the fuel. You had mentioned when we were discussing the sped budget that they had, that's a, excuse me, a different line item. And we, it's determined by the, who we contract with.
Correct.
So do they have the ability to, I know, you know, gas prices are high anyway, but would they, do they charge a little bit more? Or do they have to go by, you know, what they're paying for gas? I just, you know, just for some clarification.
The contracts do not specify whether there can or cannot be a cost escalator for fuel or other expenses. So they could very well raise the cost in the middle of the year, and they have. So we, we have to be pretty conservative and, and put a number in there that gives us a little bit of a cushion to make sure that we, we don't have a shortfall. Our own fuel, it's a little bit different. It go, we buy through the, we get it through the town. They then bill us and the town does a, on at least an annual contract through a bid process. And that does guarantee them a fixed cost regardless of what happens to fuel prices for that year.
Wow, okay, that's interesting. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on to technology. So technology staffing, so there's one coordinator. There's some other positions that fall within technology because they don't fit anywhere else. The P A C technician, the music accompanist. And then we've got contract, our union positions as well, support, the paraprofessional. And then two teachers who are in support roles for students and staff as it relates to both hardware and technology applications. So you see the total. You then have supplies at $12,000. Those are things like keyboards, mice, monitors, those sorts of things. And then contracted services at $85,000. And then I listed some samples of what the contract services within technology would be. So you could see, see what those are. Some are software applications. Some are contract services for support. And others are network hardware types of support like Comcast, for example. So any questions on technology? Keep in mind hardware, like computers, laptops, those generally come out of capital. We put in a capital request each year, and those are planned for within that on a five-year basis, a five-year replacement basis for each, each device. Mike, I don't know. I thought you started to have a question.
I was going to take him about, Dr. Dutch.
Okay, so ready to go? Next is the early childhood center. So there's a halftime director. There are four teachers, one's S L P, and then eight paraprofessionals, and you can see the total cost. Their supplies, they do not have a supply line item. Their supplies are rolled into the Wampe Tuck budget for supplies because they are housed at the Wampe Tuck School. So I don't know if they're, it's pretty straightforward. I don't imagine there'll be questions, but certainly happy to answer any if there are.
I just have a quick question for the staffing. Is that based on what we project for enrollment next year? Or is that, do we think that the staffing we have today will just support up to the number of kids we expect to join the E C C?
It is based on the number of students that we're accepting into the E C C. There are more students who are applying than we have seats available for. We certainly could grow the program from an interest perspective, but not from a space perspective. We'd have to, we'd have to look at alternative structures, whether that would be all half-day or, or some other sort of configuration to, because we do have a full day program to, to come up with some alternative configurations to accommodate all students. The other piece of this is that there, there is a fee, it's a fee-based program for those students who are not enrolled in special education. And, you know, while it's, it's highly favorable compared to a private preschool, that may not be sustainable if we continue to try to grow the program. Additionally, I'll have shared this with the school committee at school committee meetings. We are struggling with getting payments from, from some, and that's causing a, a negative cash flow at this point with this program. But we'll continue to, to push that. But obviously, that would impact this if, if that continues to be an issue. So.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to look at the totals here to give you an idea, and I'm going to get this as large as I can. So we try to break this out so that we can provide data both back to schools, to the public and to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as the auditor who, who looks at all of this information as it relates to what the budget is and what's actually expended a year out. So we, we categorize salaries as regular ed, special ed, the paraprofessionals, custodians, secretaries, and then administrators in each building, as well as the, the central office across the board. And then supplies by school. We, we then total this, which is, is not included here, but was in the chart that you saw early on. We then, in special ed, you'll see there, it's a little bit different because they've got some expenses that, that don't fit into any of these categories. So we've got transportation and out-of-district expenses. Within central, we've got some contractual obligations through longevity that are in some contracts. So that's, that's why that's a different color and stands out by itself. And then at athletics, again, not fitting into any of the categories. You've got the league fees, transportation, contract services. Excuse me, your member, league fees or membership fees. And then you've got your totals by school. And that gets us to, and, and by program as well. And then that gets us to our total expenditures of $46,204,762.75. And hopefully, that matches what's on the next slide, which I will move to. Which is our revenue. And then I'll give you an opportunity to go back and ask questions about any of those others, if you'd like. So I've provided you our F Y 21 actuals, our F Y 22 actuals in revenue, and then what's projected, and you can see the change there. So our Title I grant is at pretty static, 85,000, $85,680. A slight increase in Title II A, and we think that will continue for F Y 23. Title IV has been the same for virtually every school, every year. Title IV is the arts enrichment type of program. Title II A is educator improvement programming. So that, that primarily goes to professional development. I D E A has gone up very slightly. That's the special ed grant, and that's a, a state grant, but it's a, it's a pass-through from the federal government. E C C grant is also a special ed grant, and that's pretty static, slight, slight increase there. The special ed improvement grant and the early childhood grant for special ed were one-year grants, were discontinued for this year and, and won't be continuing moving forward. Metco, we don't anticipate our enrollment going up for Metco, so we don't anticipate what, that our revenue would go up. Our circuit breaker revenue is a little higher to this point. This is what was budgeted. And so we're increasing that amount as well by little, almost 6%. So you can see our total revenue for grants is up 2.2%. We then go to other revenue from our revolving accounts, which were primarily historically fees or non-resident tuition. So the programs like I X L gems, the language-based programs that, that students are enrolling in from other towns, and the school committee just voted or is going to vote on increasing those tuition rates. We've already received this year close to this 214,000. So I'm pretty confident that, that we will see that increase as a, as a number moving forward. So we budgeted for that as well. Athletic fees, you can see there's a 100% reduction because we've not included those fees. E C C fees are static. We're not proposing any price increase. And we're not anticipating any increase in enrollment, so that number is the same. Our ridership for the bus is down about 400 students. So we've decreased the anticipated revenue for that by about, by $20,000. Sports events, we, we've done better this year. It's a non-COVID, relatively non-COVID year compared to last year, where spectators were not allowed. This year, we've done better, so we've budgeted that amount for next year. The bus lease, as I mentioned, is, comes from the town directly as an additional revenue. So our revolving subtotal is down about 181,000 with the reduction of 220,000 within within revolving, so 17% decrease. So our total offsets are down 129,000. When you, when you factor in the grants increase and the, the loss of revenue in revolving, our total offsets is down 129,000. The town, you saw currently, the projection is the town contribution is 42.9 million, which is an increase of 1.688 million. So the total revenue for us increased is $1.5 million, which is a 3.49%. And again, this total, 46,204,762.75 matches our expenditures to the penny, fortunately. So I will open it up for questions.
Well, first off, I think you're going to get high praise over the course of this weekend because of the fact that the athletic fees are going away. And I think that, that's great. I know we've talked about it for getting rid of the fees for years. And, you know, things such a large increase in the town when in the past we've gotten less than 1%. I think it's great that we're able to, you know, give that, give a chunk of that back to the town because for a public school, we shouldn't be paying for, or having families pay for things like the bus, or the kindergarten athletics. So I'm glad to see that we're starting to, or continuing to be able to eliminate some of those fees. So yeah, I'm glad that's part of our budget for next year.
Sure. Agreed.
Are there any questions from the committee on the overall revenue side?
I just want to comment that, you know, it's a great presentation. I love the detail. And the, the fact that the, you know, revenue is to the penny to expenditures. I mean, it's great, but do we not want some kind of buffer in case some, there's some unexpected expense?
I think when you look, and I'll use, I'll use homeless transportation as an example. When you look at a number like $24,000, there, there's a buffer there. when you look at a, a number like twenty-four thousand dollars, there, there's a buffer there. Um, virtually every line item excluding salaries has some level or has some level of buffer. Um, you know, it, it, when, when you look at, and, and I've provided you historical uh, perspectives as, through the year as we're going, so you can see where we've spent money. And in some cases, there are line items that are overspent. And in other cases, there are line items that are significantly underspent. And, and a budget, just like your personal budget, is just that. It's, it's a projection. Um, and, and some things come in under and some things come in over. Uh, I'm, I'm confident that, and, and really need to be that we're not going to need to go back to the town and ask for additional funds to cover something. Um, you know, and, and even the revenue pieces, uh, you know, there may be more money coming in from uh, grants. There may be additional monies coming in from circuit breaker. Uh, the numbers that you see in those line items are very conservative uh, as far as, so, so really it's very conservative on the revenue side. We're not going to get less than that. I'm pretty confident. And it's very conservative on the spending side. I don't, I don't see that we would be spending more than that short of some, some significant, uh, issue. And I think there's enough cushion in other line items to absorb what that might be.
Great. And I think overall, um, what I'm seeing through the presentation is a, is a really good handle on um, what we're spending our money on. And, you know, where monies can be reallocated to be more beneficial to the, to the students. So I really appreciate that. And I know a lot of time and energy went into this, so I, I appreciate all the hard work that everybody's put into, you know, making the, the, getting the, uh, the most for our money. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, Dr. Dutch, I just had a quick question on the, the bus fees here. Um, do we expect, you said our ridership is down about four hundred students. Do we expect that number to stay down next year?
I'm not sure. Um, I don't know if that's a, a function of COVID and people not wanting children on the bus. Um, is it a function of parents working from home more and they have more flexibility to drop their children off? Um, and will that change? Uh, I, I don't, I don't know. Um, you know, we, we've got to look very closely at our capacity because, because really we were overcrowded on the buses and with four hundred more students, that would be an issue, and we've got to look at how, how we manage that. Fortunately, we have two new drivers. Um, so that we can absorb that and create additional routes. Um.
And that, that revenue, we had enough.
Yeah, if that revenue goes up, um, it, it's going to be needed to, to cover the additional costs of making sure that the buses are not overcrowding.
And as my follow-up, making sure we had enough bus drivers to add additional routes and then, you know, having, having enough buses in our fleet to be able to support them.
We definitely have enough buses in the fleet, and I keep my fingers crossed that we have enough drivers. We, the two additional drivers help. I don't know who's going to retire. You never know.
But no, I'm, I'm glad we're adding bus drivers because in the past it's, you know, struggling to find enough, not, not only in situ, but across, across the board, so.
Yep.
I'm glad that's the case for us.
Mike, can I ask a follow-up question about the, the bus drivers? Um, just like right now, we have sixteen and, you know, we do have the two new bus drivers. Is there like a, a good number that you, that would be like a, um, number of bus drivers? Um, like a cushion for that, that position?
Well, a, as the routes are structured now, sixteen works. Um, you know, if, if ridership goes up, uh, then, then we depending on how much it goes up, will determine whether we need additional drivers. Um, also, we have a couple of people who've come on board as substitute drivers, which is helpful. Uh, because there are always people out on, on an occasion. Um, so. Uh, it's, it's my hope that, that we have sufficient numbers moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Long, Chairman Long?
Uh, yes, Peter. Oh, um, just a quick question. I'm not sure, um, either for Dr. Dutch or for, um, Michelle, but I know that there were some potential changes or increased, um, circuit breaker reimbursement for transportation. Um, just curious if you could comment any on the status of that or if it's actually in process, and if so, is that incorporated into the potential circuit breaker, uh, revenue number?
I can address that. Um, I believe we did get a, a small, um, increase with the transportation and it is incorporated in our projections. Um, so, uh, that, it's, it's, it's such a small amount though, that what they allow you to do, so it, I don't know that it makes a big difference, but.
Right. It was like what, twenty percent of the, something like twenty percent of the cost, something like that, something minimal.
Yeah, it's, um, but, uh, it, it is, it is incorporated in there, and it's not, even though they give extra money for transportation, they only have so much money in the circuit breaker, so then they might be, you know, the problem with circuit breaker is it can range um, anywhere from, you know, sixty-five percent to seventy-five percent. So they might decrease the amount of total reimbursement you get, so it's not a definite seventy-five percent. Um, when they start including transportation, because there's, it's not unlimited funds. So we'll see. It's always a question, but I do try to, um, I spend many hours just trying to make sure we get as much money back as we can.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions in general on the presentation, uh, from the rest of the committee? Uh, um, a, as Janet said though, I mean, this is, you obviously a lot of work when it's, it's presentations, and not only, you know, from our administration, our department chairs, our principals, all of our staff who, who brought up the, uh, the ask they had. Um, so really thank you to everyone in the district who was a part of this, and obviously the thirty or so members of the staff that are on our meet, meeting today, um, answering questions and being a part of this conversation. Um, this is one of the, the biggest things that we hear about as a school committee, so having this, this support, um, come to this meeting and being a part of those conversations, our regular school committee meetings is, um, is a huge help. So thank you all for being on, um, today. Um, and Superintendent Burke, I know.
Yep.
Yep.
If I could add one more thing before you go to public comment, is that okay? One thing that we did leave out that I just wanted to circle back on because we, we recently spoke about it, and I addressed it in the state of the district, is the our commitment to, uh, technology and safety and our one-to-one our move towards one-to-one, and I know there's a cost associated that with that. So I wanted to give, uh, our technology director, Mr. Long, just a brief opportunity to talk about that and the, and the funding for that, if we could.
Yep, definitely.
Thank you. So if, uh, Seth and Rich Long could be allowed to unmute.
I think I am now, am I?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, so, um, as, as, uh, Mr. Burke had said, um, we did receive some funding and it's, this is going to allow us to get to one-to-one much more quickly than we had originally anticipated. Um, and this funding came from what's called the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which was created by the federal government in response to the pandemic and was designed to, uh, fill the gaps between, uh, districts, uh, needs and ability to fulfill uh, things like student devices. So we applied for this, this past fall and received a, a grant to, to the tune of just over three hundred thousand, which has allowed us to purchase twelve hundred Chromebooks. And these will be, have, we've already received five hundred that have been distributed down at the elementary schools and also at the secondary to prep for MCAS. And, uh, will eventually be rolled out as one-to-one devices for students and, um, the anticipated timetable for this would be to be, uh, fully one-to-one in numbers at the elementary school and in actual one-to-one devices, as in devices that are individually assigned to students. They'll be in charge of maintaining them and bringing them back and forth to school, and this will be rolled out uh, in grade six through ten as of this fall. And then, um, we anticipate being fully one-to-one with additional funding from capital purchases by fall of twenty twenty-four will be, be fully one-to-one K through twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And I just wanted to point that out because it's just one more example, when I mentioned earlier, the philosophy of how we're pulling some of this off is, uh, you know, I want to thank Mr. Long for getting that very competitive grant and, um, using it towards that, that one-time cost is, as he mentioned, is significant and would have, um, been a detriment to our budget should we had to take it from our budget monies and not acquire it through a grant. Just wanted to highlight that one last thing. Thank you.
Yep, that's a great point. Thank you for, uh, bringing that up Superintendent, uh, Burke and Mr. Long for giving that update. That's great that we were able to, not only get that grant, but also continue to, to enhance the technology we have in the district.
One other comment, if I could, if you don't mind. Um, I, I know you, you thanked, uh, all the folks behind the scenes, the department chairs and, and everybody who's contributed, um. And I don't, I don't want it to be assumed that, uh, the great work that you're seeing is, is singularly one person's responsibility or a result of their effort. Um, I've got a lot of support behind me, specifically, uh, Andrea Cochran and Cindy Seesaw, uh, without whom I could not get all the detail that, that I need, uh, and get this thing put together. So thank you to them, and I want to make sure people know how much they're appreciated.
Yep, that's a great point. I mean, there, there, there's a lot of work being done across the entire district, done a lot of things and adding this in, and, and the work that they're doing, and this is amazing. So I, I completely agree with you, Dr. Dutch. Um, so Superintendent Burke, was there anything else that you wanted to add on this presentation?
No, I just want to thank everybody for their participation, our team that was here this morning, um, all the work that's been done. I appreciate your time and efforts. Does not go unnoticed into our community, uh, for their support and continued support as we, uh, in our town, uh, partners. As we develop this very complex budget, we're hoping today, um, was, um, a user-friendly version to our, and a transparent version to our community on the money we have and very specifically how we spend it to move our district from good to great. So, and, and thank you to the school committee for listening and for your excellent feedback and questions, and certainly, uh, with a lot of information like this, if things come up um, between now and, and, uh, you know, the end of the fiscal process and town meeting, please feel free to reach out and ask. We'd be happy to answer your questions.
Well, that was actually my, my next question to you. Um, as we go through and, and really analyze the budget information, if you want to get more information on, or presentation on things like um, special education or, um, all of the, the work that we're putting into, uh, curriculum for next year. Um, is that something you want the committee to file to me, and then I'll, I'll have a conversation with you to add that to, to a future agenda?
A hundred percent. We'd be happy to, yes. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. I, I think, you know, the more we can get that type of information out into the public, the better it's you know, just going to give that comfort and trust in us as we move forward into next year. So, okay, that makes sense. And then is this presentation going to be available on the, the website in the, in the coming days so that, uh, sorry, the community can come to the next meeting with any questions or have a chance to review it, but okay, we'll do, we'll watch the video.
We'll have it up as soon as possible, likely Monday.
Okay, thank you. And it, la- last comment, last comment, then I'll, I'll move on to public comment. Um, I know in our town meeting over the past couple of years, it's all, it's often a couple of people that stand up and say, well, you know, the school budget is one line item. Um, and obviously, you know, some of those people don't attend our meetings and don't see the level of work that, that's being done. So anyway, we can, um, make sure this gets publicized out to the public so they have a chance to review it either before one of our meetings or before town meeting. And I know you and Dr. Dutch are doing a great job of sharing that, but anyway, we can publicize it as well, I think will you know, help make the town meeting process a little, uh, easier.
We can do that. Thank you. I agree.
Um, so at this point, I'll turn it over to public comment. Um, as Superintendent Burke had mentioned, on our meeting on Thursday, it'll be more of an availability for the public to ask questions. Um, obviously because this is just getting out today, it's more of a, a comment section. Um, but obviously in Thursday's meeting, we'll take as much time as possible to answer any questions that, that the public brings to that meeting. And then any questions that come up after, um, through email, um, phone calls, whatever, we'll make sure that they get addressed. And then as I call in, you all, if you don't mute, if you can just hit either your name and either your school, school affiliation or address for the record. Um, so, Miss Sonia.
Good morning, everybody. Um, first of all, thank you. As somebody who's attended these meetings in the past, this was a very informative. Um, so I have comment and then a question, if that's okay with you, Mr. Long. Comment, um, number one.
Have a answer to that.
Okay, okay. At least we can put it out there. Um, comment number one is, um, as somebody who's paid over, I just did a quick analysis, somebody, a family of three that's paid over thirteen thousand dollars in fees during our time in situ at public schools, the, um, getting rid of the fees is, is amazing. So thank you for doing that. Um, and I just, seven thousand alone in athletic fees. So this is a, a great savings to families. So I thank you for that. Um, my next question is, um, Dr. Bobart made a, a comment that just stuck out. She said that the reason our private school tuitions went down by close to a million dollars, of course, is, you know, students have graduated, but that we were paying out of district tuition for people not residing in situ. So my question is, number one, how long had that been going on? How much have we paid over the years? And is that something we can get reimbursed from the, um, I guess, the sending town that, that should have been paying? That's a, I don't know if that's a question that can be answered tonight, or possibly, I mean, this morning, or possibly on Thursday on that one. Um, and then two quick questions on, um, athletics. I know that you said girls golf is in the budget for next year. Do we have any update on um, this spring's girls golf? What's going to happen with that? And as a gymnastics mom, I just want to know why there's no gymnastics supplies? Is it because it's in contractual um, with the gyms that, that they're contracting with? Because I noticed no gymnastics supplies were listed in the, uh, winter sports budget, so. Uh, that's it for, for what I have.
We can take those, uh, questions away, John, and, and try to get an interview on all those for, uh, those in it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, next is Laurie Withrow.
Thank you, Mike. Laurie Withrow, sixty-two, and Vinyl Road. I appreciate the transparency, of course, something I've always brought up, so thank you for that, Dr. Dutch. I, and my, my question was going to be about when this would be posted to the website before Thursday's meeting, so I appreciate it. Um, it is difficult to see the numbers and really be able to ask questions when you're just seeing it online. In the past, when we've had the meetings in person, we were given a packet at these meetings, so as soon as possible, if that can be published on the website would be super helpful. Um, as far as revenue, I have seen on other towns, I, I don't, you probably can't get it for this year's um, revenue section, but I have seen on other towns' revenue that they have included organizations like PTO, boosters, shore, SEF, um, course, different groups in town that contribute toward um, the overall budget. And without those organizations, we mean truly our budget and revenue is a little bit higher to be able to run the town's education. And a lot of it, some of it comes from these other organizations. So I was wondering if you had considered, I don't know if you can do it for this year, because you would have to, you know, really be in touch with those organizations, but to look at what those groups contribute, which really is going toward the total academic experience of the town. So that was just one of my comments, and again, thank you very much for the transparency and, uh, look forward to the meeting Thursday as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Uh, seeing no other, um, questions in the audience, I'll move on. Um, and just so people are aware as well, um, the presentation of this, uh, will be im- available immediately on Situate TV Facebook page as soon as the meeting ends, and it'll be on their YouTube page, uh, later this afternoon. Anyone who wasn't able to either attend the full meeting or for others who want to watch it in the town. Um, so that concludes our meeting for today. Again, I do want to thank everyone for coming today, um, again, for all the hard work being done by the district. And this is a conversation we'll be having, but of course. And this is a conversation we'll be having over the course of the next couple of months as we get to town meeting and really into July first of next year, but you know, thank you again for everyone who's been involved and and a part of today's meeting. So if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at eleven fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
So there will call out Long, yes, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Dr. Barkowski?
Yes.
Miss Limblom?
Yes.
And Miss Frangellini?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your weekend.
Thank you.